Muthuana 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 Kaba muthuana Kaba muthuana Ay, rata balimata today Because ngeni mutuana Agunamutuana mukubu Tu Ay Ni busmani velapi Jahani Ako ak Ekumbu velapi Oh, ozo ve velapu muthuani kumu Ay, today ifa muthuana Unless you are saying there's a problem Well, I'm telling And I can tell you this, Tosa, what are we going to do about it? And the TV Utiba Nenani jata motiba, ngeni buaka motiba And the TV Okay, must we start again? Let's start. Can we start? No cause if I need to Thank you very much for being here My name is Ntibimu Tise Kemu Tzualana I am from Haute In the western, the western corridors of Haute I am a member of parliament I am a representative of the African National Congress in parliament Um, I am a member of a portfolio committee on forestry, fishing and environment
Eh, ni kama lam, ti mu, mu shoni peki, untiwi, mutise Ndisuka, vipondo, iha uke Ti liluku, le paramele, ti mele kumuto, iye Nsi Tisa opense sakeni kumu, sitoge, lomte eto, mi yiroayu Eh, wemililo yama jenero, na manda
I am with members of the portfolio committee
Ti na oke, amanu oke, nna o, apaya, kula portfolio committee, eteta kayo
Before I introduce them, I want to register the apologies
Pamkuwa gene, was, se ni fumele, ni ke, ni fagali, se istan klaeso
Of other members who could not join us through unforeseen circumstances
Amanyamalungu, awakanga was, busman, aga yeme, nati, genkaya meko, Nsi, ka, kane, sabi, my best, ya was, kusmele, ngena so
We have received an apology of Honorable Faith Mutambi
Sisfumele, ni ke, si soka, mu shoni peki, unfeith Mutambi
She's the chairperson of the committee
Usichala okewa, the committee, si la, ilafa namshan
I am not the chairperson
Andi muiye, mna usichala, the committee
Eh, I have borrowed powers
Amabu, niyage, namani, kaba, uledi
Hagi and lali ka london
That gave excites me
Eh, I don't play with power
And lali, kamaani
Ungadishi, no gukia, tza gukia
If you leave me with food, I'm going to consume that food
Yeah, so don't leave me with food
Ungadishi, geno gukia
I, eh, we have received an apology of honorable Phillips from the Democratic Alliance
Ni smene, istan klaeso, oshonpe glay, o Phillips, wo di no guleti, eh, the Democratic Alliance
We have received an apology of honorable Webber from the DA
Iluku leti, eh, mu shoni peki, Webba na, yu, kufaris, tan klaeso
We have received an apology of honorable Mbata of the ANC
Mu shoni peki, Mbata, kujalo, usua ku ANC, kufaris, tan klaeso
We have received an apology of General Bandu Olumiza of the UDM
Mu shoni peki, General Olumiza, usua ku UDM, na, kufaris, tan klaeso
Eh, we have received an apology of honorable Paulson of the EFF
Mu shoni peki, ukoso, soka, kumu, tu, EFF, kufaris, tan klaeso, na
Eh, ah, they are not undermining the people of Kumu
Abadi, tele, ni ke, ni no gudula kuku
Eh, zese, yes, Yudoba, eh, you get busy at times
Ku yese, kaba, amatla, sa, fuma, de, kubame, ke, paya, napaya
And your programs clash
Kube koke, no kuba, kubane, kuko yezu, busme, ba, wu, ya, spada, kanyi, ngena so
Or registering these apologies because they would have loved to hear
Si fake, tume, kuba, ke, mene, kachanda, kwa, bade, kuninaani
And we have also received an apology of honorable Singh of the IFP
Smene, istan kezo, oshonpe glay, usi, osuka, kumu, tu, iye IFE
Now, on my lines
Apa kase, mene, munku
Is honorable Gancho
Mu shoni peki, ungancho
She's from the eastern clip
Osuka, apa, iponu, mndana, umkuwa
Gwala apa, ge, na
He is from the east tape
Akachatan
She is not married
Eh, honorable Gancho Akachatan, ni, philemos
She is not married, I'm sure you're right
You heard me, am I right? Akana, and we say, ni, nuse, kani, kus
She is still, eh, up for the market, as you can, as I indicated
Well, I'm not saying that On my left is honorable Mthunu
Apa kase, kumlele, kuku, mu shoni peki, umthunu
She's from Kwasulu, Natala
Osuka, iponu, kese, eh
She's half married
Akati, beka, anka
Ni, eva, mslado, ni, half niyani
You can understand where I'm coming from
Gama ya, gama ya, ma, eh, gama ya, ma klaeso, uchadi, gama ya, ma klaeso, akachatan
And times is married, and times is not married
Eh, honorable Mthunu And then, on my far left, is honorable Bryant
Apa kase, kumlele, kuku, mu shoni peki, Bryant
Eh, shame, unga ito, lige, akana, mutu, na Ni, philemos
Yeah, Trevor, you didn't understand me
Shame, he is walking alone He's waiting for God To intervene
Se, ni, desi, umja, tebusa, was, oke, ngena so
Eh, and I pray for them
Eba chadase, na
Ba, ma, ma, ba, meka, kushla, be kumu
Pa, ka, ba, ka, amakati, ke, chi, eri, eri ya kumu
I don't know if they will succeed, I pray for them
Yeba chadase, na, kene, ba, ka, fumele, na, kuke, ba, ka, fumele
Magistanda, see man Let's pray for them
Praying for them
Shame, honorable Bryant will get something, honorable Bryant, you can see
Ni, mu shoni peki, ya, nga, tige, amba, ni, yakamo
If you have identified potential, you must just breathe me, brother We continue with this
Kubone, yakamo, ya, mstela, like, in class, but you know, sam sam
And if you, koye, loku, blum, ni, jani And if you, blum Yay
Wani, ni, loku
Brother
Then, you can get any loku from
Honorable Bryant, honorable Bryant, you have been identified
Mu shoni peki, ke, ma, kuni
It looks like you're also remaining in Kumu
Ya, kuni, nga, tu, sa, osheka, ma, kuma, sujika, mene, na
Ay, ma, ke, ni, tete, nde, ni, ni, fune, mlu, ni, ni, kuyani Yay, brother
I can see that, every person is married
Right, eh, thank you very much for being here
Ni, kulela, ka, kuku, ma, ni, kunina
Eh, and you go, na, game, na, kubamnand
When I am around, it's always nice
And basa, ba, ni, since it's umma
I talk about myself, not other people
Teta, ka, me
I talk about myself
And take me, ka, ba, ni, ba
Not other people
Ni, ni, ka, me, ni, koka
You must not, eh, move around and saying that are not, eh, fruitful
Yeah, I'm talking about me now
I'm talking about myself
Ni, right? I can smile, man, like Put a smile there
Eh, ni, ya, kuma, ta, eteta, kunina
What did you smile, Tosa? Akani, mu, ni, tu, me, man
You can smile
Mu, man
You can smile
Now, honorable Gancho is a member of the ANC
Mu shoni, du, gancho, ni, loku, loku, tu, iye ANC
Oda, mwala, apa, iponu
Or I stand in front of the province
Honorable Mthunu is a member of the ANC
Mu shoni, du, mthunu, da, ni, loku, le, ANC
Eh, she's from Kwasulu, Natala, like I said
Osuka, iponu, kese, oshen, shuloka, pa, me
And then honorable Bryant is a member of the DA
Mu shoni, du, Bryant, ni, loku, leti, eh
Is from the western clip
Osuka, paya, iponu, jona, koro, ni
Now, we are a multi-party delegation
Sisi, treba, ge, eh, si, tibanese, amanu, ka, soka, kantela, ka, manta
Go, go, ab, ako, member of the ANC, ab
We are not members of the ANC here
And there's no member of the DA here
Ako, ni, loku, leti, eh, ya, ma
There's no member of Inkatha, EFF, so
Kuma, member of Inkatha, de, mi, meki, kuto
Ni, kama, lu, in parliament
We are members of parliament
Ni, 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 ri, cho, in parliament
Do you observe or watch parliament?
Do you watch parliament sometimes? Akom, tum, krenji, kaba Akom, tum, senji, kaba
Nobody is handsome like me
Have you seen, eh, I mean, you know
You ni, as, bo, ne, la, kua, chanda
I mean, you know Do you follow me?
Ni, ya, ni, bo, na, kua, ya, kagele Ni, bo, man, very, very I'm coming from Chobe
Bongo He man, there's a gun
Hold on, I'm coming back to you
Now, I want us to, the trailer, ubas, paka, ame
I'm inviting you to all stand up
Eh, abata, abata, tabakupe, imi, nwas, imi, nwas
Those who are having heads, gentlemen, can tip off their heads
Let's take a national anthem
Situle, umobe, with his
Then we can start with our business
Hab, must, kai, lonsi, is, which one, amshan
(Singing) Oh, si, si, leleli Africa Malu, ma, hisu, kondo, raio Hizwa, yipitana, so yetu Oh, si, si, lelela, china Kusako, raio Ure, la, buluka, si, chabasa, Esu Ure, hiseni, chalimba, swegu Use, buluke Use, buluke, si, chabasa Esu, si, chabasa South Africa, South Africa And she, oh, from, oh, Sehirwa And he, he, deva, nonzi Kusir, de, ve, ve, bares Pa, ni, transa, amkori South of all, to come together And united, we shall stand And our spirits, are awakened In South Africa, I
Kuku, za, kubamnand Ni, kuba, go
Where about you stand now?
Eh, ni, kuba, go Di, di, wa, luku, shushu
I can feel that I'm coming in warm now
Di, za, kuba, go, eh
Where about you stand?
Man, ni, za, diva, man, that's, ja, man, ni, za, diva
But you will hear me
Eh, di, za, money, deceit, and then, man, di, za, kuku
I'm going to continue as you would say
Eh, as promised, we had agreed to start at eleven
Sifumele, ma, sa, kala, ke, si, me, shumel, na
And I think, I think we, we did quite well
Senza, rakshi, apu, rene, kela, lam
The people that we had expected to arrive, if now, are
Bafiki, le, abane, ispa, di, baba, bafiki
Mas kobe
Let us continue
Umna, du, kubala
It's nice to be here
Umna, du, kubala It's nice to be here
Umna, du, kubala, ba
Later, ete, later stage, ne, di, zone, itanda, se
I pray for you
Tu, wifundis, mna, ni
I am a reverend, or a pastor
Ti, na, yoland, to, ma, di, itanda, se, la, ba
I do pray for people
Do I look like one?
Bonaga, la, nga, ni, wifundis
Do I look like wifundis?
Bonaga, wifundis
Ni, ke, ni, 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 ya, ti Eh, ni, ni, ya, ti, le, e, chonga, sun, tanda, se
I'm going to pray for you
Wan, wifundis, tanda, so
Who wants to pray here?
Okay, who wants to be prayed for?
Wa, du, wifundis, tanda, se, ba
No, ke Ah, ni, wa, ni, si
At least, the number is too big
I can't pray for all of you, eh, one by one, but I can pray for all of you at the same time
Ni, kani, tanda, se, tanda, no, ke, get, the, sheli
Sun, tanda, se
I want to pray for you
Ni, ndas, musi
You know me?
Ni, ni, libe
You forgot about my name?
Di, ucha, uwe
My claim name is Chawe
Di, koo, si, ke, unna
I am a traditional leader
Eh, chawe, kam, 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 tangi
My claim name is Chawe Dage
Eh, kachi, u
Chiwo is another claim name
Ni, ndivam, ma
You can hear me
Yeah, me, 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 la, me, la, ka, me Chonga, eh, I want to welcome all the traditional leaders who are here
Tu, kwa, mke, la, song, ke, ngokil, sembele, osko, paraj, kuetu
All the traditional healers who are here
Namu, ke, bang, ka, ba, ni, ke, ke, mesi, ben, sa, esembele, dia, ba, mke, na, na
I want to welcome all the councilors who are here
Otreba, ba, la, pa, dia, ba, mke, na
All members of the world committees
Amanlu, eh, what committee?
Community development workers
Isir, dia, kupi, workers, abase, ben, si
And the most important ones is yourself
Aba, pa, le, ka, kue, ni, 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 ka, ba, tal
Thank you very much for being here
Kulela, ka, kulu, kobe, nu
I want to appreciate the presence of the leadership of council
Ni, ya, ka, kulu, kame, la, amanlu, apa, wis, treba, i, councila
Eh, the world councilor, yes, councila, chenene, sia, 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 kulela, musa, gas
Otreba, olap, ha, ke, otreba, chenene, eh, we appreciate your presence
Pa, 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 ma, ke, da, dikheli, pa, pa
Please, you can use, so, ah
Tell the finger to animas
You don't know
Ni, amas Councilor, ha, ni, kuti, keta, kandwa, was
They seem to be doubting that
Akani, se, ben, se
He's not working for you?
Ah, ni, koi, ni, chong
Say that, don't be afraid
Usent, ti, we, namshan, je, ma, if, akasi, ben, si, ni, chwa, ke
If not working, you must please change So that it can be captured
Ni, amas
You know him very well
Akani, mso
Does he work at night?
Uh, ya, amitam
Does he go to church?
Okani, ka, ba, ambi, indawin Ni, es, mas, indaw
Or he misses other places that I don't want to mention
If, u, una, is, olo, eh, cho
If he was, we, sa, de, please, tell us
Councilor, chenene, thank you very much for being here
Si, kulela, treba, chenene, kuba, mi, ngena, namshan
Chenene, eh, eh, eh Chenene, ay, by the time I leave here, councilor, eh, di, zo, mi, kwa, pronounce, eh, la, ka, ka
I will be able to pronounce your name correctly, is
I also want to appreciate the presence
Di, funa, kona, ke, u, kame, la, kuku, o, dwa
Of councillor, Khanga
Otreba, uh, Khanga
Kutena, ba, mbo, cha, cha, cha
Why are you only serving your name as Ar?
Ha, Khanga, chenene
We've got, uh, Khanga, we've got, uchenene
Chachawe
We've got, uchachawe, also
Chamotise
Chamotise, is a hard name
Adfunu, ba, unta, ni, bu, mutise, apa, kasa, le, eh, osuka, kama, ab, ndi, u, chamotise, bo
From now, I'm going to call the chamotise
Rancho
Ma, onel, me, mso, eh, eh, onel, me, ba, Rancho
Chamtrunu
Chamtrunu, another member from parliament
Kaprind
Kaprind, another new name of parliament
Ben, di, chili, ba, kuzo, kubamnand
I told you, it's good, nice to be here
I want to appreciate the presence of parliamentary staff
Funa, wa, mke, la, kubodu, amanlu, kua, strasa, yasuke, paramele
Shame, bayas, ama, ona, yes
They are trying their best
Shame, some are beautiful
Abane, ba, kagele, ka, ba, tal
And some are beautiful
Abane, no, oke, go, da, ka, ba, tal
Di, tela, ni, pa, ka, went, boy
Please, we'd like to see you Abasa, boss, staff, from parliament
All of you, please stand up, all of you
Si, antela, ya, no, ke, ni, pa, ka, na
Some of them are desired
Abane, oke, chala, si, mene, go
There is a general, general, so, all are general
Tela, ya, u, je, kele, ya, pa, kam, slanda
Ni, ba, mku, ya, si, musu, ka, ito, lige, eh, akuko, ama, busman, kubamba, ka, kabe, su, kui, si, paramele, ni, ke, na, kuba, ka, ito, luge Ni, ke, na, kuba, na, kabe, su, kui, si Mu, diso, kui, si, sa, kui, kati Ka, ba, kuka, ka, ito, luge, ka, ba, kuka, ba, ka Look at the beauty, eh
Ma, kus, eh, si, amanu
Shame, well, they are not married, all of them
Aba, shaka, na, ta, de, bo
Eh, identify, potential, they, get what you want
Na, kua, si, musu, kulela, ya, yakamo
Ni, kuku, akom, za, apa, apenda, akom, tu, ah
Everybody, please Open with the maget
Akom, tu, ah, tu, ah, pa
Everybody, open with the maget
Yeah, eh, that's King, King, hi, King
Eh, nam, ya, ke, u, King
Shame, akana, ni, ambo, na, man
You can see King
Shame, ni, za, u, King
He's flying his level first
Who is? Tla, 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 that's, tla Eh, aw, tla, tla, in, farm
Tla, tla, is also, eh, smart
Eh, in farm, you can see, probably, na, na
Akabo, ni, ka, kagele, in farm
Koto, ay, eh, na, shame, ni, ya, chi, u, tla, tla Ni, ya, ni, ya, ba, le, ka, no, ba, le
She is, eh, Rana
And then, it's night Well I don't, I don't see them Nam, di, in farm, ni, ana, ma, sometimes Bamba Eh? Albetina Ni, ka, kuteni, na, kuteni, ana, ma, eh, na, ku, Albetina
Albetina is also in our mist
Eh, shame, na, eh Ni, ya, za, be, la, je
Eh, is also open with the maget
Akana, and present, eh, na
He has got nothing
Oh, ya, nam, tu, lisan, eh, na, ba, tim
I'm the only one who is, or
Do you mind, you, pet, eh, or, ab?
I am the only one who is
Who, ab, ab
This is my, eh, homestead
Eh, councillor, chenene, ni, na, ke, like, you just choose, bus Do you have, be, na
I can choose, eh, councillor, chenene, eh
And then, za, utume, liku, kwa
I would say, in the long, or, like, eh, let it, let us eat
And then, it's next There's Lindi, eh, Lindi, hi, Lindi
We've got, uneni, in our mist
Eh, in farm, ni, ana, na
Eh, his eyesight is not that
Akabo, akabo, ne, we, kute
He's not, eh, he's short sighted
Bonela, apa, fucha
Very, very short sighted
And then Chili, oh, then, there's Chile, eh
Chile, eh, na, yu, kwa, na, kuma, kosa, am, si, am, kunina
This is the support staff of parliament, very beautiful, eh
Mas, kasa, ke, ya, mu, na, ba, si, masuke, paramele
Ga, ba, ba, tu, ba, pete, ni, se, ben, se, unga, ito, lige, kele Ga, ba, ba, tu, ba, ba, ni, ba, tro, te, pa, ni, ke Eh, kutale, eh, pa, ma Ma, ke, ba, kane, eh, si, eh, si, stata, ba, ti, pasi, kumu, ne And it? And then, we have beautiful interpreters, thank you very much, thank you very much, colleagues Then, we have beautiful interpreters here
There, colleagues, sa, bo, na, no, was, ya, kagele, eh
Kini, pa, ka, ame, man, ni, jani, what
Please, can you stand up, all interpreters?
Shame Beautiful, not so
Ni, ya, bo, na, ki, ba, si, ba
These are people who help us understand you
Ga, ba, was, eh, de, ke, basu, asu, ni, fatality
They are multilingual
Bate, eh, ilu, ilu
They speak all these languages, Tosa, Tzualana, Zulu, Veda, Tonga, and all of that
Bate, eh, song, ke, ilu, mi, Tosa, si, si, Tzualana, song, na, jalo, jano
Including sign language
Skona, ke, la, ba, si, ben, si, ilu, mi, kuto, eh, lomche, eh
Thank you very much, thank you very much
Ni, kulela, kulu, kobe
And then, who's next? Who's left? Oh, they, those ones, they don't like introductions, akere, ga, ba, ba, kuka, ba, tu, ben, senchi, los, unga, ito, lige And will, and will, and war, and war, ya, kua Eh, ga, ba, kuka, ba, di, za, o, lise, eh, ola, kwa, ba, kuka, pa, ya, za, kuka Ka, ito, lige Ni, kwe, la, wa Ben, di, chile, man, na, di, eh, ni, eh, ni, kum, na, man, ni, ni, koto Okay, ma, ma, best, kuba, ge
Let us continue
Ni, ni, za, ba, shu, shu, eh, eh, we move
Yeah, well, we warm, eh, we move along
Ni, right?
Are you okay?
And neither, too
I don't feel, I don't hear you
Are you okay? No problems?
I don't know, so, it, like
Good I want to invite, eh, councillor, Khanga
Funa, u, mema, ke, otreba, uh, Khanga
Eh, so that he can officially welcome us
Asa, u, tige, asan, ke
As, tal, luba, India, in, in, India, si, bo, shi, eh Kono, eh, yeah, as, tal, luba, India, India, si, bo, shi, eh
He will tell us that at least the team is ready and strong
And then, we, we, sia, mukele, kilena
At least, we must feel at home
Yeah, koto, amna, u, ya, ndam, ke, la, ka, ni, ni, kuba
I am continuing, even if I
Councillor, Khanga, ni, kuba, mse, ka
I can continue, eh, see, councillor, Khanga
Po, fa, ba, tu, ma, ma, di, li, di, li, ngu, na, mbo
My people are still waiting for me
I've, I've around three. I find no more. I go. And then. Okay, I'm going to. Okay, and then who can get married to the sheep? Okay. All of you want, eh, cattle? Because, oh, was if free wake up. Councillor Hanga, thank you very much. Eh, you're more than.
Then we created the entire house. All who made the means today. And they made the means and they came out and they left all their responsibilities. Came to comfort, to be with us and bless this occasion. We know that they did not, eh, eh, come unjustly because they had nothing to do at home. They left whatever they were doing to be with the people who are here. I want to say to them. Remain in this mood, loving what belongs to you. I say to all the kings, our kings who left their occasion, their work and came to this occasion. I would want to say to them as well, remain as the same. Say to all the councillors of Mchonto who left their work and their words and came to this occasion today. To them as well, I want to say, remain in that fashion. All the representative do it in same from all different directions, from wherever they are working. To them as well, I say, keep on, hold it, don't let it go. And. Shutting the work, let me say, honorable Modise. I want to introduce the twenty-six ward councillors of Mchonto who were here. I'm mentioning the ward number, I wonder what councillor, wherever he is or she is, just wave the head. Eh, what one?
What two?
What two, that's the one.
Councillor, eh, we are begging, Modise. What? If I'm going to get, what three?
What, eh, what three, eh, as I said, councillor, the ha, the ha.
What four?
Eh, what you seen eh?
What five?
Eh, what is standu?
What six?
Is standa two.
Hashtag.
Hashtag. Eh, you are here, councillor.
What seven? What seven? What eight?
What seven, what eight?
What nine? What ten? What eleven?
Eight, what nine, ten, eleven?
What twelve?
Ten, what twelve?
What thirteen?
What thirteen?
What fourteen?
Fourteen, ah, shah.
What fifteen?
Fifteen?
Eh, what sixteen?
What sixteen?
What seventeen?
What seventeen?
What eighteen?
Two minutes ago.
What nineteen?
Two minute over.
What twenty?
What twenty?
What twenty-one?
What twenty-one, ah.
What twenty-two?
Eh, what twenty-two?
What twenty-three?
Eh, what one twenty-three?
What twenty-four?
What one, what twenty-four?
What twenty-five?
What one twenty-five?
What? Number twenty-six?
Eh, shah, what twenty-six? Eh, I want to thank all the wards who are here who blessed the occasion. Those who seems not to be here, let me say, eh, honorable, they are there at one thirty. There's also an occasion taking place there. Then, in passing. To the members who are here, despite Jefferson has been mentioned of it, let me just go over. Just to the honourable chair, Modise.
Glad to see you.
Honorable, eh, what council of fifteen, eh, what council of fifteen, eh, I'm glad, eh, understood.
Eh, na guye, diamamkeela.
As well, he is now, eh, observed and welcomed.
If I would number two, eh, honorable Deep Brian. Na eh, siyamamkeela.
We also welcome, eh, honorable Deep Brian.
Kwey kuncheke, watindu mama, watindu mokodo.
Eh, there is also that feeling when you look at him, say, eh, we're few women, females. Then they say, watinda mama, watinda mokodo.
Eh, honorable, M Kacho. Na eh, siyamamkeela.
We are there, eh, honorable Kanto is welcome.
Si beno, honorable Tim Kunu, na eh, siyamamkeela.
Kunu, eh, Kunu is also welcome.
Bo kwenze kanchalo, lo masu.
Let me express then my gratitude, my welcome, my warm welcome to our visitors. Eh, our dignitaries and say, I see you have jackets. Yes, there, there is a chair there, you can hang them there, just behind me so that when you go and collect them, I can see that now you are taking them. Oh, more than that, your bags, please bring your bags to me, I'll safely keep them. Eh, with these words, know that you are not in shock, you are at King Jono. Relax and give us what you want to give us so that we can develop together this country. You are welcome. Ah, I return the podium to you, Jefferson, and I can remember you mentioning, he, it seems as if we are getting cold. And we should have been there, eh, we should move, move our bodies. Yes, yes, indeed, with excitement, that we are going to do. Over to you.
Thank you very much, councillor Hanga. I'm thanking you as honorable Chamotise.
Eh, the honorable, honorable, oh, Chamotise.
Thank you very much, councillor Hanga. Eh, we feel indeed, we feel welcome. I must deposit our apology. It's a bit dark here. But councillor, I'm brave that this is you all. You must take care of this all. You must protect this all. When you want water and electricity, you don't destroy the all.
Where does the all come in?
But we are told the generators are working on the other side, honorable. Because the infrastructure is still being developed here. And you are go, you are going to be much beautiful on light, man.
That I'm not saying that you are not looking so wonderful.
I'm sorry.
I can't feel that excitement, I don't feel you.
And you finish?
Eh, I, 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 I can't feel you.
Oh, it's Friday. Send it to me, eh, pa. Everything been? Enda, where is a corner?
We are here, let us all be here, we are here.
A great, Simony, a great, choice, man, a choice, choice, fucking cold. I want to invite honorable Brian.
Eh, honorable Brian to, who's the mayor?
Eh, to give us an overview. About why we are here? Because honorable Brian, I don't want the situation where you get, eh, 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 to a meeting, councillor, and you are told that people are here for water. Or, or umban.
Eh, oh, is it electricity?
So, so honorable Brian must give us an overview, why are we here? And why do you think, why do we think that it's important for us to be here?
Honorable Brian, overview.
I like that, I like that language, he just interpreted it in my language now. And nobody looked at him because they didn't hear him. Honorable Brian?
Thank you very much, honorable Modise. And welcome to everybody, thank you so much for coming out today, I know it's a bit cold. I know it's a bit cold, so let's all try stay warm and we are looking forward to hearing from you as the community today. So, we as a committee have been travelling around the country to all nine provinces. And we are travelling around to speak about one piece of legislation. And that legislation is called the felt and forest fire amendment bill. So, you have been handed out these flyers. And on that flyer, it explains exactly what we are discussing today. This bill deals with fires, dangerous fires. But it speaks mainly to dangerous fires that take place in the public, in the felt and in the bush, not in private homes or buildings. Now, this legislation is very important because when there is a big fire that takes place in a forest or in the field. It can destroy crops, it can destroy animals that people farm, and it can also then destroy other infrastructure. So, we already have a piece of legislation that deals with this, which is called the felt fire amendment bill. But this bill is aimed to make some small amendments to that. So, what we need to hear from you, the community today, is firstly, whether you support the bill or not. And secondly, if you have any other inputs that you'd like to make that relate to this bill. We don't expect everybody to speak, but if you feel that you want to make an input, honorable Mkunu will explain to you now how to go about doing that, thank you.
It seems we are not welcome, we had a present here in Congo.
Anis mkuwa, eh, rumrum.
Are you not going to clap hands for my colleague?
I'm sure you have heard what Honorable Brian has said.
Diya temba, ni kuvile, edo ke tuwa, uka wa, umshoni pege.
Poki diya sa, na di teta, si ta krike mna. Anzu, yeke leto, ba, i, i, kule, anza ke leto. I want to invite Honorable Mthunu here.
Divmelele, ni ke, dam, damgele, wa pond, agi.
Honorable, Honorable Mthunu will explain to us the procedure that we're going to follow.
Uza ukasa ge, ne, nukubesa de silela, ne na mchanje.
And what happens going forward?
Wese ge, no, na, suga, kuke kapami. Ge di chilo, muzu, uchati, la ka chatan, ne, ne, kumbulamse.
You remember, I said, have merit eh.
Nili meri.
Have merit, you forgot about that?
Kati banja, na ba ta ta pa se, kumbuchini.
Eko si, shagas.
Thank you very much, my honourable member.
Um, good morning, Mulweni.
Diya Bulisa, Mulunulupela.
And greetings to the honourable members and the honourable councillors.
Bulisa ma lunga, shonpekle, na ma, no, no, treba, ama, shonpekle, ba pa nbitu.
What councillors are very important, Honorable eh, chaplain.
No treba ge, ba wa ba baligle, kuluke, silaru, wa ni kumitu.
I always refer to them as the, the mayors of each and every ward.
Si ba ta, ta, kuba ge, ba koso tulup, uzo, zo, ngrihi ward, abadi ba suga, uzo.
Because before you get to the, eh, the mayor that, that is running the whole eh, local municipality or district. The first contact is the ward mayor, who is the ward councillor.
Pa mukoba ufigele, ne, kuso tulup, lo west here, ne. Uti, ukale, utibane, konya, no treba, aba, ge, di tige, go, kaba, bo na, bo na, soko tulup. Pa mukoba ufigele, ne, weyena, na, kuku soko tulup, lo west here.
So, we highly appreciate their presence.
Si tanda kaku, uzo, norma, koba, wa na mchanje.
And we humbly greet the traditional leaders.
Bugucho ba, siya Bulisa, dugo kele, se vele.
And the traditional healers, the community.
Na bo ge, banyanga, kubesintu ge, nulunu, chigene le, siya Bulisa.
Uh, the parliamentary staff and all the support staff that is here today.
Amakosa, suke parlament, eh, astasa yo na o, diya wa, kage la ke na mchanje.
My duty is to explain to you the procedure that will be followed as we will be making submissions.
Mse bezwa, mge, ukasa, dugo besa de silela, ne, ge, mogo sa, beke, si kefumla, seza ma kalelo, galo mte to, yiloyo.
There are two ways of making submissions, oral submissions and the written submissions.
Si bi nege, ye la, zo farai kalelo, kuya wa, zweze kalelo, uweza, oh, oku theja, kublomo. Okanya, kuya wa, zweze kalelo, ulipalepansu, se no pefa, uli zui se kapami.
Oral submissions will be done eh, in this way. The chaplain will give you an opportunity to raise your hands.
Ustila lo, ge, uza, anikituba lo, ba, opa kamsa, sa, na, kau, funa, geza, ye kalelo, la, oku theja, kublomo.
He will start on, on my right.
Uza ukala, ge, ku sa, na, se, nené bu.
And then go to the left later on.
Ge, uye, kasi, kosh, ro, ge, apa.
We will need ten people.
Sifuna je, abanu, abalishu.
And those ten from the right will come and occupy this chairs in the middle.
Abasu ba kase bu nené, ge, abalishu, ba, tiba ta, le, weze, tulus, la pa, kapami, ge, ogunu, bo na, esu, esu eh.
When you are given a platform to talk.
Ta uni weyikona, luka ge, uthe, e, ukefumle.
Please introduce yourself.
Si na eh, ustrele, wa, ubani, kaba, nisuka fina.
And tell us whether you agree with the amendments or not.
Ustrele, ne, kana nzaru, ba, kaba, kuya kasa, ya ufulanana, nolise kache, ki, so, kanya, ufulanana.
And then you make your submission.
Ni se, ge, ukefumle, ge, mte to, o yiloyo.
And we are only given five minutes to do the submission, to the oral submissions.
Ni kage, nis, ustrele, silaru, uzo, ukefumle, kublomo, ge, apa, mte to, los, tuke de na o.
We are here as parliament and there are councillors, which means there is local government. We are not going to suffocate you when you raise other issues, although we would like you to focus on these amendments.
Si la pa, ge, si na ma lungu, eh, parlament, eh, si konye, na bo, ge, utreba, se, kala. Godwa ke, divmelele, di ti kune, ubanga ba, umne, to, mchaybe, ge, engeye. Esitale, ne, kubte to, o yiloyo, sa, kumela, ukefumle, na, kona, di sna, tanda, obasi, trile, gulo mte to, ukangwe.
Um, those that will not get an opportunity, maybe they are afraid to go to the podium. They will have an opportunity to do written submissions.
Amo ge, mchambi, ge, ba, ti, mo, i, ge, uza kapami, le, ba, fa, kaleses, uzo, ma, kublomo. Si ba, nikitulu, ba, ge, ba, palepansu, uzo, ba, si basi, di selle, kapami.
Na ngia, uchilega?
We have chilega on my left with our support staff.
Chilega, uzo, wa, zuti, uh, uh, anike, e paper that you will fill.
She will hand over a paper, uza, di ge, uli, kualise.
You will then eh, eh, take the, the written submissions to them as a support staff.
Ye kalelo, ulipalepansu, ge, ya, uniga, amakosa, ge, la, agu, ni, no, chilega, apa, kese, kuna le.
And I believe all of you will take this opportunity because we want to hear your views.
Diya temba, kuba, kaba, ge, songe sa, udi, siltate, gesanta, eh, shushu, eh, ni, chuba, kua lo, si funa, kuga, wa, isu, uzo.
Thank you very much.
Diya bolela kaku, ustar.
Thank you very much, eh, Honorable Mthunu.
Bolela, msho, ke, mthunu.
Ni mvilale.
Did you hear?
And Honorable Mthunu zulu.
Umslo ni pe, mthunu, ge, mumzu, uzu, kapai, case eh.
Diya ben tumba, uza, di tis zulu.
I thought she was going to express herself in this zulu.
Okay, ne zulu, anisiva.
Do you don't understand this zulu?
Is zulu, ne sposa, Monsieur Fuchan?
Is this zulu, eh, ne sposa, they happen to be neighboring languages.
So, when I speak to Honorable Gantu, him closer, mina, when she speaks to me, him closer, diya mva.
Kani teta, nomso me, Gantu, si evana, mna, di.
Agazu, di, agazu, di, so, oze.
She cannot speak behind my back.
Chonga, chonga, so, oze.
She cannot do that, she cannot gossip over.
Honorable Mthunu, yeah, with her zulu, she can never gossip in my presence.
Di pe, mthunu, na, ya, kana, utheja, and them, di corner.
Aguiska, so, kulu, Monsieur Kulu.
But, when you want to speak, is this zulu, is ya kulu, we speak our language?
Honorable Brian, with her, with his English and Africans and some Portuguese, he sometimes speaks Portuguese.
Umslo ni pe, Gantu, ge, na, ge, es, es, the African, time, ge, es.
He can never, he can never gossip in my presence, I will hear you.
Aguwa, snai, uche, taba, ni, anidimwe.
So, there's no language that I can't hear.
Agu, re, meaning, a, was, eh, uniga.
There's no language that I can't speak.
Agu, re, meaning, a, was, uli, the.
Just try me, this amen.
You can try me.
Ukolo, don't, zama eh. Which language do you think I don't know?
Lolo kule, wali, tya, ba, a, was.
Pakamisisani.
You can raise your hand.
Zulu.
Is this zulu?
Is cause?
Swana. Sudo. Venda. Tonga. Africans. English. Yeah, same language, eh, eh.
Yes, bamba, ge, es, o, ge, be, ge, as, ba, them.
Councilor Khanga, there was a man on TV, eh, he was eh.
Kindoda, ge.
From Goala, eh, Eastern Game.
Is carrying from Eastern Game?
He did these things there, at the funeral of Matiba.
Something like this, da, ni, tu ba, ge, si, si, mabini, kama.
I don't, I don't want to go on media and do my things, you know.
Andifule, ge, uba, tuwa, ge, kameni, da, ba, tani, sense, ah, ge.
It looks, but it looks like I'm the only person who says, hey, I don't understand.
Pona, alka, dimdota, unu, unu, mele, anaspa, muchini na.
Aniko, right eh?
You seem to feel okay.
Ni kotohola.
You have a feeling that's cool?
Shu, shu, na, teni.
Why am I warm, why am I warm?
Organies, because I've already, unga itoli. Unvile mosi. Organies, umshao me, uti, koba, sendi, fune, no, unga itoli. Must not go on record. Self man, umtunani, organies, senti, shu, tuklaru. Oko tolai, uzo, zon, kotohoni, but eh, the right. Ute Honorable Mthunu, masale, apa, on the right.
Sa ukala, ge, kase, unene?
Eh, di tala, ni, panga, misesani.
Can you please raise your hand?
Kutana, di theja, man, on, okusile, kutatamna.
Are you speaking throughout the day?
So, 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 magini, theja, na.
Let me hear your views now.
Wa, kuali, tinga, do, ngale, ngale.
What do you think about the mayor?
Eh, it's September today, yes, the third year. Aba, ba, ba, ma, diya, diya, kona, put man.
Yeah, I would like to see the woman.
Imo put, isa.
Please come forward.
Eh, itadi, isa ndadi.
Please come forward.
Di tala, isa, na, kaba, eh, on the, on the right.
I would like to get hands from my right hand side.
Di tali, zanla, apa, e, unene. Be di chilo, wa, uka, sa, san. Be di chilo, ni, kubun, apa, e, unene, tala, ni, panga, misesani.
Please raise your hand.
Ni go, i, ukale lu, kansi, ba, na, ma, sanam. Kage, di tala, ge, be, he, get. Na, ku, tava, ni go, mo, i, ki, ute, views, admet. Agu, ta, buzo, be, tumtua. Pofa, kom, tumtua.
If you're safe, your pants lies around. You must not be afraid of him.
No more hands, on the, on the right, e, kunen. A, 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 ako, zanla, pa, kunen, e, kunen.
Can I get hands from my right hand side?
Okay, man, di eko, songo.
Let me go to my left hand side.
Di eko, songo. Be di chilo, wa, dimbi, great.
I told you that I'm very excited.
Okay, le, le, let's do this, ndadi. Ndadi. The, the chief, I'm told he's a chief. Eh, soko bele, kai, magabuwe, magabuwe, utati. Eh, kosi, am, du, soni, pi.
You're going to be the last speaker.
Uza, 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 soko bele, sa, kau.
You'll be the last speaker.
Also, te ti, le, ya, kom, do, za, ute.
When you're spoken, who's going to speak after you?
Eh, eh, si, siya, siya, bo.
Thank you so much.
I, I, I really, you know, I admire traditional leaders. You know why? When di chilo, ums, di ucha, we, na.
I said, I'm my mayor, the chawa.
So, I'm a chief myself, I respect the chiefs. And once I've spoken here, nobody can speak. Isa, na, apa, eh, eko. Tali, zanla, eko, so. On the left. Ba, bu, ma, amakati. To, oma, ma, ba, ibamba. Ba, bu, ma, amakati, wa, la, be, kum. Eh, all municipalities are represented here, in the, in the, in the district. Eh, Port Saint Jones, are the people from Port Saint Jones here? Are the people from Port Saint Jones? Are the people from Shondro? Eh? Bakona, ba, pasen, Shondro? Bakona, ba, pasen, Inole? Bakona, ba, pasen, Zolo? O, is Zolo, is it? No, but people of, 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 Port Saint Jones are here, yeah. And di, ni, kona, ba, pasen, Satchonis. Kutaku, una, amanzi, pa. Di, can, mani, mani, eh, mani, amanzi.
Is the people from Port Saint Jones are here that there's water there? I want to go there?
Yeah, una, there's pink water, ne, mani, laundry.
Kukamanzi, ama, nini, si, mani, eh, ge, yo, xadwa.
Ke, ke, di, 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 mshopi, ya.
Uweze, li, oba, si, suki, timoni, di, mshopi.
Ustoli, anja, nis, kosa, nis, eh.
How do you interpret, kosa, while I'm speaking?
When?
You interpreter. By Jacobon.
I thought it's cool. Aba, ni, tala, ba, pasen, Port Saint Jones, ba, paka, misesani.
I want people from Port Saint Jones to lift up their heads.
Diamba, na, ni, siya, esnuka.
I'm going with you to the Snuka?
Ni, azas, esnuka.
You know the Snuka?
If, na, si, uwa, ni, es, abeni, zo, npati, let us, konya, no, ma, five later. Can you, bowling, ba, one, is, what, they, figure? Right, okay, let's take, eh, how many years do we need? Three.
Si funa, ba, na, banga, bi.
Five, four. Four, four, okay, let's take four more hands, on the left or on the right?
Eh, aban, esas, oba, kuta, la, se, prele, la, selunene.
Okay, that was, ba, eh, yeah.
It seems that if we are going to finish early here.
Shagas.
Say?
Morning.
Morning.
Isagi put.
Speak now.
Heh, teta, bo, bo.
Mani Bulisa, ge, le, se, kama, de, gus, Jesus Christ, amen.
Let me greet you all in the wonderful name of our Jesus Christ.
Eh, kubakonsa, umful, de, la, ifan, umte, kuti.
Amakonsa, umtela is the surname, and my claim name is Timo.
Eh, usuka, kaba, wa, wa, twenty, eona, wa, tipu, ra, ben, ton.
I'm coming from one twenty, this is the biggest one here in Shondro District.
Eh, this eh, Uleye Amendment eh, eh, bill, ndidi, eh, supporter, kaku.
Let me come to this amendment bill. I'm saying eh, diya ikasa, kaku, ute, eh, cause, what's a bond.
Oh, inga, umbi, ba, ke tuwa, ge, fire protection.
More especially when we are talking about the protection of the fire.
Kuyegwa, kona, eh, fire protection, ni, ucha, wa, ma, lelo, o, ni, si, lo, niaka.
Where a lot of eh, fire, burning of the fields this year, eh, yes.
Lo, do, yen, ze, imfu yo, ne, sina, yo, inga, di na, wu, ju.
That made that all our eh.
Livestock.
Or livestock that we have not having enough food.
Speters, si, fa, sa, ndapa, singe, na, to, uti, he, sa, no, pi, kuba, ge.
They died, and we end up not having anything stock to sell.
So, what, eona, to, kulu, me, te, ge, angacha, kasinata, kuyo, kasi, teta, go, kuseleka. Kuku wa, biye, na, noko, amachelo, na, we, tu, kuba, ge. Kawe, biye, we, kuku, na, uti, ko, noko. Uza, balula, na, kua, wa, basa, otibabe, bay, wa, kata, wa, kua, zu, wa, kata.
The only thing.
Kuba, wa, biye, wa, nga, aleni, she.
The only thing that the government can do for us is to help us and eh, eh, make fences and eh, just to protect. So that the people that are looking after the stock can look eh, after the stock better. When there is a fence.
Number two, over your tribune.
The second one or the last one?
Once, sangabina, livestock, tina, asna, e, wo, pi, kuba, ge. One of our late father, Korito, family, I used to say, no farmers, no future. So, si tala, be, ati, kusele, wa, ma, lelo, so, to, squazi, kuka, kata, eko.
There are, are, look, guys, to protect this eh, eh, field so that when we don't have eh, stock eh, as our elders, the previous one said. If we don't have stock, we don't have anything, we, there's a loss.
Eh, the, the, the.
Is that one?
Eh, mani, kahlele, kuinkos, soke, sa, sima, bonumse, is this, we, eh, too?
Greetings to our traditional leader, Charlotte, those from, from the Bonumse area.
Di, kuliseke, we, dignitaries, VIP, all protocol observed.
Man, di, tige, pangani, se, ba, za, yo, wa, na, ite, sha.
It, lo, banzige, eh, kamale, kosi, eh, Jesus Christ.
I greet you in the name of my Lord Jesus Christ.
Eh, Kosi Luxani, Giorgio, abba, kuzo, kwez, yes, is, la, la, na, si.
My name is Kosi Luxani, from Giorgio, in one of the rural areas around here in Solo.
Yeah, I stand to support the bill.
Ndima, abba, eh, no, kasa, um, teto, u, ilway.
Eh, kusichlome, loke, so, so, mteto, no, u, ilwayo, zikona, je, zwezi, mi, ni, eh, di, ka, peni, doba, anitetanga, pa, kangazo.
I would like to indicate that there are two issues that I would like to leave, which were not covered by the amen, the, the bill before us.
Oka, ye, kenditi, kuba, ne, ngakalanga, nasipha, tu, wa, la, neleyo, lo, kuba, ne, si, kai, kusele, kaba, la, la, gelpe, bandi, pe, deyo.
Since you didn't explain fully within respect of the document that is in front of me.
Man, di, tige, eh, ndi, ngakuboni, yo, koko, kuti, kuso, songe, es, wa, disichla, si, rai, le, mililo.
What I don't see in the document is that in the words that are really affected by these fire fires.
Aniteti, o, kai, kesho, eh, kodi, je, si, plan, eh, za, ochala, kwez, la, li, si, na, la, ma, lelo, eh, si, communal lands, si, chaka, ku, lo, si, feli, livestock.
You are not talking to the training or any condition plans that will be located in the areas who are mostly affected by these fire fires.
And also, ule, bileno, aniteti, eh, awareness campaigns, eh, kufune, kase, ze, ki, le, kuso, songe, es, na, o, si, chelo, akama, lelo.
You are not also talking to an awareness campaign that is supposed to conduct, so that people throughout, so that those that are affected by the fire fires are really made aware of the dangers of fire.
Ukuse, kele, bileno, ite, responsive, we, challenges, es, na, zo, kule, mi, chabai, eh.
Ukuse, kele, um, teto, u, ilwayo, kua, si, kanya, kusai, bela, ngakasa, ne, mi, ge, eh, sti, o, ne, na, we, da, we, chala, kuso?
Isani, no, kai, kesho, kubantu, ana, be, si, na, o.
Please bring training to the youth that are coming from our own local areas.
Nize, eh, infrastructure, eh, za, ochala, ikwi, stand by, kule, mililo, ino, ku, ku, si, without it.
This, eh, 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 to see that, call, without, eh, see, eh, or stand by in the areas that are mostly affected by these fire fires. Thank you very much.
Because, man, I can't tell, eh, the, 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 the.
I have a problem.
Because, man, I'm, yeah, Ted, kunen, it's a, da, ba, gang, in, the, the, the.
I need them hands, while I'm speaking, but I understand, after, that gentleman is, okay, and you are glad to hear.
I, man, 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 kwa, jeh, eh, eh, eh.
At least, a round of applause for me, please.
Good morning, fellas.
Eh, in, goes, isla.
Thank you very much, Chefess.
Man, the bull, eh, kwa, jeh, eh, eh, eh.
Thank you for the round of applause before I present my case.
Eh, lo, na, ke, ma, si, bu, koka, mi, mi.
My name is Ma, si, bu, koka, mi, mi.
Eh, station commander, I agree, overtime of fire and rescue services.
Station commander for overtime of fire service, services.
Eh, the parameter, abba, o, kasa, eh, eh, bill, eh.
I am here to support the bill.
Eh, can, eh, change, eh, back, close, too.
Would I look at the roster?
Kule, no, yo, kwenzi, wa, K F P S, Fire Protection Association.
With regard to the formation of Fire Protection Associations?
Oh, eh, ku, ndi, chabli, sa, yo, kuku, ba, is, eh, swag, ngakasa, na, koma, spa, la.
I am happy that it is brought to the local municipalities.
Because, is, so, go, is, eh, leno, yo, ba, is, eh, department, eh.
We used to have a challenge when it was located up in the department only, not in the local municipalities.
Eh, since, eh, eh, like, eh, kuku, ya, ma, we, status, eh, script, eh.
I would like also, to also align myself with our previous speaker.
Eh, pre, ni, ni, is, eh, leno, je, ma, spa, la, be, ne, responsibility, in the traditional leaders, yo, kwenzi, eh, S Y P, S S P S.
Traditional leaders, eh, swag, is, are tasked with the, the duty of establishing these S P S.
Provide any training, yeah.
They must be training for these functions.
Equip, eh.
They must also be provided with equipment, and that must also be included in the bill before us.
Eh, na, leno, ke, eh, eh, as, eh, si, eh, S F P S.
When you are establishing these S P S.
Kuta, kuka, kuka, kangel, eh, ka, ku, lu, kwez, na, o, si, si, fire prone areas.
We must look at the areas that are mostly affected by fire.
Like, niandi, eh, and, eh, in, o, sa, hill.
Um, ze, ke, eh, in, o, sa, hill, ku, ni, nda, o, ya, se, niandi.
O, ku, ni, eh, di, we, ya, klan, na, o, ite, tam, o, close, five, o, teto, eh, 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 weather services.
I appreciate the clause, clause five that talks to weather services.
Eh, ask, eh, kasa, eh, kaba, eh, do, ba, na, eona, dosi, funa, yo, kwez, warnings, eh, fire danger index.
What we would like to get from the warnings is the issue of, of fire danger index.
Kwe, feki, oka, ye, kwe, ni, eh.
It must be on a weekly or on a monthly basis.
O, ku, ni, eh, koka, prepare, na, kuku, ni, wa, aman, eh, eh, kasa, yo.
Last thing, we need to be given some powers.
Eh, kuku, ni, wa, aman, eh, we, peace officers, to the traditional leaders.
And traditional leaders.
So, kuba, eh.
So that they can arrest.
Yo, chisne, yo, is, eh, sa, ka, ku, lu, kwez, si, sa, eh, mililo, ya, ma, lelo.
That.
Eh, yo, es, oh, powers, fire, eh, eh.
Those powers will really cap the, the eh, the, the, the occurrence of these fires in our area, so we need to be given powers to be able to arrest a person who has started a fire. Thank you very much.
Well, I. Gabate, eh, never, but, kajeh, eh, eh.
Why are you giving a round of applause to, eh, it seems to be a selective.
I thank you, but, eh, kajeh, eh, eh.
A round of applause for me, please.
And it's a comment, eh. Kuba, kuba, uh, that.
The police, eh, goes, sa, lo, ne, ne, stabasa, ke.
Greetings to Chefessin and your delegation.
Eh, in, goes, eh, 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 eh.
Our traditional leaders.
Ngaku, mungo, su, fu, eh, 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 especially.
Especially, Chief Buligela, whom I have eh, recognized.
Mna, ke, disuka, koo, solo, eh, eh, Toronto.
I'm coming from Toronto, New Toronto municipality.
In our local areas, I'm talking to myself as I come from that local area. If we happen to get a person who started a fire. And we're not sure whether that punishment is the right or the correct one. That person is fined to prepare a liquor, that is the traditional liquor and also provide also a ship. We're not sure whether that is in order. But we have, that is our practice. We would like to get the offenses or the penalties from the side of the government. Another thing that may, may to really support the bill. There is a lot of soy erosion after these felled fires. We have got a lot of faroes in the areas where I come from because of these felled fires. As I have written in my submission, I'm appealing to the government so that the issue that relates to fighting soy erosion must be really looked at by the committee. I have got a lot of issues that I've raised, but some of them, I have captured them as I have written them down in this paper. I would like to get a response in relation to the items that I have highlighted in the paper. You are not responding to me, but you are responding to the local area where I come from, which is Badwin. The last point, Shepherdessin? I was happy when you said what I do know is not merit. It is not fully merit. I listened to that very carefully. Thank you so much.
So it's one down, two to go. One down, two to go. So, so it's one down, two to go. Because me now, yeah, agree. Let me greet all dignitaries, protocol, sir. And also pass magnitudes to the whole house. I give the honor to my king. And from one ninety, the suicide and lose goal. I'm grateful about what I'm getting today in concern in the forest. I will not be long because my British speakers have already said. My plea, Shepherdessin, is that if this forestry can be fenced, because there are also very wonderful and important animals there which are to be protected. In the absence of the land being fenced, it's so easy that a fire can be set and they can cut fire easily and not be protected. That's why, that is my plea, that they should be fenced, be protected, and also to put guards there, so that if they expand, then they can be opened in a very formal way. Secondly, there is a point which is very important, but people miss it. If training can be made, so developed and that out of the forestry, those trees, that certain ornaments can be developed and young kids or young children can be trained in that area. When one observer looking when there is a fire and you see that it's burning down the forestry and you being a carpenter, you, you are in pains because you know, this is money. Something wonderful, something good can be made out of this. Secondly, if then the good protection can be developed to the forestry and wonderful and then so that because even our heads of cattle gets into that forestry, they get lost there and you can't find them. Because if people can wake there, some are very tense and are very dangerous and you know also bad things are happening there and matters are happening there in those forests. If one can look at the ancient period, those forestry, then they were chopped and they were used as wood, they were taken to homes and then open spaces will be there. But now, because we are using electricity, we are not more using it as fire, then they are so dense, they are so dangerous and bad things are taking place there. As I said, then if one can look at the contractors and have contractors there who can develop this forestry, because we also get precious stones there, which you can cut them and, and make wonderful portraits with out of it. Thank you. Mamuka. I isn't Bogoto's midline. This is for the first time. And it's such big gala. Let me then greet my leaders there. And also greet to my kings of our country who are here. All the ward councillors who are here and greeting them. And from Nyangin. My friend's name is Makon. Then on this bill, let me also make some input. This felled and forestry bill. I support it and support it by saying but. The government of the day says we must come and have inputs on this bill. I say even there in Nyangin, we have a very rich forestry. If they can be attended to, cut and streamed and have opening, they can be very beautiful, been fenced. Because when one comes to the forestry, oh, there's no way to go, it's just a lot of unwanted things because they are not attended to, they are not cleaned. I'm saying now to the government of the day, who I'm talking to, please have people employed and placed there in the forestry to be of assistance to you. Because there, where I am, where I'm having my small business as selling and I'm close to, I do see people dragged into the forestry, because it's not safe there. I say I support this bill and I request my plea is that let be more people employed, these young people who are unemployed to assist, to be there. Yes, there are people, but they need to be increased. As I'm having a stand, as I said, government, where I am, the place is not secure, there's no undercover and the rate, even the apples I'm selling, people are not buying so much and please assist us. Some of us who are as small farmers and then we need a plantation to go and plant, even now if we can be provided here, oh, we'll clap our hands. Thank you.
Firstly, let me greet the observed the whole house.
And Colani. Philites, my sene.
And this is a Port St. George.
I'm from Port St. George. I'm working for that organization, working on fire. I will, I will make inputs and I think I will make only about three issues input. And then I'll speak about and then those component fire and the mlilo.
And gala we act, we act has been there before. And it was meant to control mlilo, yamashilo namashat.
Fire and the forestry.
So we call again the, because every landowner should be held responsible of his or her own land. Now my concern is on the open space fires. I believe the fact that we called the chiefs and every municipalities on board was to say, there is no man's land, every land is golden owner. So a point I'm getting, we accept in public communal and open air. I believe maybe they talk one thing, they're saying same thing to, on my side, the way I read.
In communal and open field, that is one and the same, they're speaking to the same issue.
To move on on this bill, I'm going now to the fire, actually the weather services and the association that needs to be established. Let me talk of the associations, the associations were also there. The association was part of the act.
When this was set up, it was part of this act.
But the only problem was that.
But the problem it was made, it was loosely set up, it was not strengthened.
And I feel like there was no support to those associations on the ground. And lama kumku agakange anikwe, the financial support to make it sure that they keep control of felled fires.
Why this association were not giving it support and it were a man.
Now I'm glad that the chiefs and municipalities are called on board to make it sure that they are responsible and they are running this process. And I consider them both parties, municipality and the chiefs as landowners whom they have to take care of their land. And I feel like it's not enough, so in causes, yes, no, but this might come as an opportunity to the people that they live on their land.
As a side association, I feel that.
And on the agenda in the group, the fire services now every, the bill is called everybody on board, which it means now if it stands, we have to make it sure, as this pick up a set thirty, we have to make it sure the training, the financial support, actually. We have to strengthen now to fix off, to fix what was not considered before.
I feel that then there should be a follow-up municipality, the one who comes with the bill and the government, they should go forth with it and strengthen it and do a follow-up. I'm just a supporter as an association of one oh one.
To move on to the weather services.
We there in the locality who are the most suffering people due to the fire felled, because now, I'm happy that now, yes, the government is there to strengthen, to see, to eat that, even the associations, they are going to look upon them, that they should work, so that there should not be any loss of any kind.
So weather services, I know it's national, it is centralized the weather, but let's consider the remote areas, which we might say, a local weather is differ from the national weather. So if they have a device from national weather services, they can cascade it down to the local, to the ground level, so that whoever is running, sorry, so that the associations can use such device to make sure they are, they are assured of the weather at their respective areas. In terms of, I think we have to move on, we, we, we title, then I've seen who do we change the title to, take out the forestry part. The title, I, 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 I like it because it accommodates everything, even though forest has been taken out as well, but it is still included because felled forest, the fire start, I call it a wild fires. So the title doesn't matter if we change or we don't change it, but still, we were talking of the wildland fires here. Therefore, I pause, thank you.
You know, you know when you pause, it suggests that you might, you, you, you're coming back. So when you pause, it's like saying coma.
Greetings to parliament. Greetings to parliament.
Ward councillors.
What they ever they want.
Bononameka's equals.
Traditional leaders, kings and chiefs. I acknowledge your presence. My name is Mtobe Wosamani.
A sila nature reserve.
From a nature reserve.
Along the way to Port St. George.
On the way to Port St. George. I would like to indicate upfront that I do support the bill before us. The issue of the bill before us, if the bill can be strengthened, it will assist us a lot in our local areas. Most of the time we are using nature. People eh, are careless that they burn eh, the grass over there and then that fire goes on to affect even our own forests. Our animals eh, domestic animals are not protected at all from the fires. People who are using traditional medication or indigenous medication, they are also affected because of the fires. I was very happy when I looked at the bill and found that there is a call for eh, an interaction or a correlation between the government and traditional leaders. Traditional leaders have what a voice in our own local areas. If government and our leaders can come together and work together, at least the processes can benefit the community at large. My appeal or I would like, I'd be happy if when the bill is passed into a law. There must be training where people will be involved in so that they can conduct awareness campaigns throughout our areas. The issue of the act eh, one oh one of nineteen ninety-eight. That act must be strengthened because if you are a land owner, people must know that they are, they are given power, they must have the responsibility of training other people to look after their land.
Eh, least but not last, last but not least. Gonna last substitution of section thirty-seven of act one oh one.
As I work in the, in the forest. It's, it's as if I am excluded if you don't eh, insert the word forest in that clause. Even if I see people eh, doing illegal activities, I won't be able to intervene because they will tell me that, no, this is not my area of competence.
I thank you. Me right?
Are you still okay?
Me right?
Are you still okay?
Right, um, can I check if there are further inputs? Are the people who still want to talk to us, a good talent, a gentleman, a good talent in the.
I'm speaking, I'm challenging you in that, anyone who like to make an input regarding the bill?
So inviting goals.
I am about to. If you say you are chief. I'm not sure whether that is your name or.
Oriafa.
That is the same?
Yeah, but eh, if, if in cause, they, they bring eh, but in cause, so the, the, the.
I was unaware that you are a leader partner as well, I thought that both will give them.
Eh, it is not out of, it is not out of disrespect. But we also welcome your inputs. Okay, are there further takers? A dank men says, oh, no, don't interpret. When did she look up like the jonga? You know? Eh, you know if I can speak Sisana here? Half of this world won't hear me. Are there, are there people who can speak Sisana? Please raise your hands. Two?
Not even a single one?
One good. One good. Yeah, I, I be famous. I be famous. This one is from the eastern Cape, at least she can speak Fosa. This one is from KwaZulu Natal, at least this close to Nissulu, they are near. Oh, shame. Ah, oh, take, oh, shame. Oh, shame.
In the Bible, counselor. I give everything to you, my lord.
I give everything to you. Honorable, honorable Brian, when you start making your thoughts as Zulu things, it says, oh, God. God, take over, God. Let she listen.
The word of God, the case that. Can I continue?
Should I leave it?
Can I continue? I am about to preach now. I am about to preach now, be ready. I'm about to preach now, be ready, please. Please, please eh, stop me. Let me calm down a bit. I was about to be in the spirit. Let me take now the last round of hands.
Because once I invite all the traditional leaders. And I want to invite Councilor Khanga again. So that he can tell us his story because he has a story to tell us. These laws that you are making are not our laws.
Is your own legislation.
It affects you, the people of eh, Kumu. Port St. John's.
Eh, Port St. John's.
So long. And so long. I don't know what is the difference, but it's just so something. See a vanamus.
Do you get me? You don't want to speak?
I think there's a hand there, the back. Oh, no, no, it's not the reason, it's submitting, okay, eh, I want to invite you, Councilor Khanga.
At least I also, I, I do have that red blood at least. When I stand up, you must greet me and say, achawe. Please, can you greet me and say, achawe?
Ah, chawe. Yeah, that's how you do it.
Eh, ego simputu.
Thank you, she person.
Ah, chawe.
I can see that he wants me to greet him in that manner. I heard you very clearly. All languages spoken in South Africa. You asked the weather, is anyone who can hear you? There was only the chief that happened to understand you, the language. I hope that there are other people that they want to you, chawe. In the language that you spoke. There is much to say, good people. I would like to introduce one of the members who have joined us. Who is the member of Mtronto council? Her name is Councilor Nanyewe Saidi. Portfolio Kumu, you're responsible for human segments? You strike a woman, you strike a rock. You strike a woman? Were coming from that month? When we were eh, fighting gender-based violence? When we had a woman in our midst? We feel really proud and feel very honored when they are amongst us. I would like one of councilors to stand up so that people can recognize and see you if people who, who do not know you. I am happy to introduce her. I am proud of her. She comes from my own ward. One speaker said, one twenty is the biggest one, but I really dispute that. A big one is the one where you find the, the majority of people. We've got one, 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 one and the first one. We could see that that one is really alone. And then we came to what two became the majority, that is where I'm coming from. The biggest one is what two because it's where there is majority. Comes after two because two is one of. So that she can eh, play her role, I really commend and appreciate her presence in our midst. In our ward, she person. We have got treasures in our ward. I'm happy when we've got parliament in our midst, we have visited us. We have got treasure, we've got forest in our, in our ward. We've got a dam.
Nemarenske forestry.
Merenski forestry is also in our ward. If we can create job opportunities in the area, everybody who is inside this world can benefit from, from those jobs. Kubenenda oso kuchela. Allow me, she person, to say, if we can have a lot of development eh, closer to that dam, where we can have infrastructure, where we can have eh, tourist attraction areas, where we've got places, where we can eh, take eh, a rest, where we can have restaurants, where people can get employed and even our own municipality manager can also benefit because there will be economic spin-offs if that area can't be developed.
Eh, Moistin Cape eh, province eh, eh, yawa tuawa ho lova tana.
Just if I can put it in context, allow me to say, I would like to say, welcome to the province of Legends. A province where people like Nelson Mandela, Oliver Tambo, and the list is endless, I don't want to spoil the, the show. Siya bolela kagoro, siya itetake, orulume butina wanba, and it was, thank you so much for the time. Please bear with me. I don't understand the language that he was speaking. I can see he's all around over the place talking about forest. Please eh, my apology. I said I'm able to speak. I didn't say no, you was also.
And even for next, like, like.
I heard nothing.
I'm sure the chief did not even hear what he said. I tried to listen carefully, at some point, I think he's Portuguese and. And the vaga to two, maga, maga says, pretend, I can talk for next.
Senior Traditional Leader of the Gattani Nobukumkani Representing the traditional council of Kethane and also the kingship of Amambodomise.
I am going to come, I have come here to represent my views on behalf of the traditional leadership. And also the kingship.
Both kingship and we have come just to say in this gathering. We fully supported the bill. Let us go back to the memorandum of the bill.
Let us go to page five.
The senior traditional leaders are learned people. They are able to refer to the clauses that are contained in the amendment bill.
Let us see page one point six.
Let us go to one point six in page five.
One point six. Close.
Close one point six.
Page five.
In the document that we have been given.
One point six.
As the kingship. And also traditional leadership in general. You might take into consideration the clause under one point six.
That we must look at one point six. As leaders. As members of the community. As a nation.
Because. The bill that is before us today. Which is aimed at doing some amendments. Especially the issue that relates to the fires that affect our fields and also the forests. If we look at clause one point six. That clause is addressing us as citizens of South Africa. Addressing us as people from Africa.
Fire and forest fires. Contribute to economic, social, and environmental degradation in South Africa. It threatens and undermines government's agenda of food security. It also results in job losses. It also results in displacement of people. It also results in displacement of people. It also and also habitat and biodiversity loss. It takes more than two.
That means we have got a responsibility for us. Because when there are a lot of fire fires in our areas. That affects our fields. That also affects our forests. That means our economy in the area. That makes people's lives better. Is affected. When there are a lot of fire fires around. In our forests and also in our fields. It results in being dispersed. That situation really disturbs. Our environment. That's why we say the bill that is brought before us. Good people. It is very, very important. Because it is really empowering us. It is really aimed at keeping the various factors that may bring poverty and hunger in our area if it is not taken into consideration. That is why we support the bill, Chepessin. We have seen that a lot of hunger and poverty that was brought by the COVID nineteen pandemic. We would like to have a repeat situation by something that really can be kept or can be avoided.
Inasmuch as we had no control over COVID nineteen.
This really is in our hands. The inputs that were brought by the community who were having contradictions regarding the bill. You need to make sure that people are empowered with knowledge and information. So that they can see the value and importance of our forests. Empower people with knowledge and information. So that they can know that the forests that we have, they bring firewood that we use as a source of energy. The deforestation that we normally experience in our areas is not good because it will affect people and also the South African in general. To deforestation wood while it's still growing at an early stage. That kills the economy of the area. It also affects the economy in the area and also in South Africa in general. Let us try and make these endeavors and trials. As a traditional leadership so that we can lead ahead in the work that you are doing. I have noted things that I would like you to please consider. When you talk of traditional leadership.
You referred to the Framework Act. Oi Framework Act,噶twenty,噶two thousand and three, I think.
You have referred to the Framework Act of two thousand and three. The document that you have referred to is need to be updated because now we are talking of the act which is called the Act of Act number three of twenty nineteen. Which is called the Traditional Leadership and Corescent Act. In all the clauses, I have noticed that we have referred to an act that has already been repealed or amended. We also noticed that the bill before us. Is making sure that there is realignment or collaboration between the councillors and the traditional leaders. We would like to ensure you that there is a collaboration between the traditional leadership and the local government which is led by the councillors. The establishment of the associations after the law has been passed. I am sure we are going to collaborate in regard to that issue. What we are appealing to you is one only. When the law is accepted or is passed. The department that is dealing with this legislation in front of us. Must make sure that the regulations that will talk to how this legislation will be implemented, they must be speeded up so that processes can unfold. Another aspect that delayed or retard the progress is the issue where the framework or the regulations are established or are implemented, say after five years after the law has been passed. You must speed up the establishment of guidelines and regulations so that we can implement this piece of legislation. We're not talking about issues that are really coming, that are really far away from reach. The fields are really affected by fires. Forests are affected by fires as we speak. The delay in the implementation of the legislation after it has been passed will really affect our economy as I have indicated. It will affect also the people that will tend to be scattered all over the place if you don't speed up the process of implementing the legislation. The climate change. Is another issue that we need to take into consideration. When we talk of people who are working for weather services. Namanya amandelo who are having a role to play in the climate change. The government must speed up the process to make sure that those issues are taken into consideration. We must not spend a lot of time looking for monies that were hidden in the mattresses. Looking for issues that are linked to pala pala. We are not interested in the pala pala and monies that were hidden in the mattresses. We are looking at the economy of the country. We are looking for leadership in the country. That we are supposed to get from the people who are our public representatives. We are giving you those marching orders.
Spend less time on pala pala. Spend less time on monies in mattresses. Focus on the core business of parliament. And the core business of parliament is to develop the people of this country. The core business of parliament is to ensure that democracy is enjoyed by the poor of the poorest of this country. You don't get those values in the monies in the mattresses. You don't get those values in the monies in pala pala. Know your business. Focus on your business. Don't spend money on setting up commissions after commission. We need development. We need improvement of the quality of our lives. And that is your role as members of parliament. That is your role as parliament. It is not to look what Mudisa is doing. It is not about the monies of Mudisa and mattresses. It is not about the monies of Mudisa that is hidden in the mattresses. It is not even the monies that Mudisa has accrued somewhere else. It is about the improvement of the quality of life of the people of South Africa. Remember the continent of Africa. Is looking up to you. It is looking up to you as South Africa. You fail as South Africa. The continent of Africa fails. And the whole world laughs at us. As a continent that could not think. As a continent that cannot do its own things. We go back to the old thing of being. The black hole of Kat Kat. The black continent. We should think we've graduated from it long time ago. Go back and do your job. And do it right.
That is the word. That is what is coming.
Bochubkos. Niya siva. Niya siva ne? Ah, ni, ah, ni, niya siva. Kaloki Nkosi is speaking on behalf of all of us. Uchawu kamti, uchawu kamtange. U, u, uchiu. Di, di la. Um, I, I, Dave, I think we've been re-inducted. We've been re-inducted. We have heard you. Um, South Africa has heard you. And these views are taken seriously. In fact, all the inputs that have been made here are important to us. Ah, no problem. Right. Ne, u, Dave, u tetile, u mamthu, u has spoken. Minha, well, I have spoken. Aba treba ne? They are diffamous. We miss your voice, man.
Mandi, bulele slalo.
Uh, let me thank you, Chepessin. I greet the chief, seniors chiefs. And also my accomplice from the parliament.
Officials from the parliament.
Officials from the parliament. In their multitudes. Yeah, the citizens of Mthonto, I'm greeting you. From the different words you are emanating from. I've been told that the taxi owners, they are panicking. Uh, it's month end today. And above is Friday. We had to finalize. Let's thank everybody who participated in this gathering today. All of you, you raised very important issues. We heard them, we heard them as this department is a malaati. Mine is to indicate from here where then. Where are your views going to land and how are they going to? We heard you, we heard your views. Our task is to call the Department of Forests and Fisheries and to deal with this aspect which you raised. Then the committee will then go into the depth of this bill which we are busy with. Uh, also taking note of all the views and issues you raised. Then after the committee is going to draft the report and it will be adopted and it should be discussed in parliament. Then we take it to the National Council of Provinces. That Nabo, they should take their side and look at it.
They will follow their own legislative process.
By following the legislative processes. Lastly, it will be then placed in front of our president, President Matamela, then to approve it. Uh, I'm very sure that you, citizens of Mthonto, you'll be very proud when we hear it being approved that your inputs are also captured within it. Let me thank the induction. Uh, yes, how will this ask? My friend name has been taken. I haven't seen a suit to be having that chawe friend name. We are really thankful, we thank you really. You came under the weather which was cold, raining. And also we, the climate change indeed it affects us, we never thought it would be like this by now. We have not yet even received the summer and we're still wearing boots, jackets, long jackets. I can also see Mamamthunu next to me having boots. She's still in winter. We, we want to thank you, we prepared something for you. Uh, when you leave, it will be handed over to you, but let it start with the dignitaries. Thank you.
Let me just start right there. What is that? U, umbonebueno uchawu katkat. Ahi kolono. Agoma mamchawu wa next apa, dimu chawu apa. There's only one chawu here. Konu mnu chawu.
Konomu chaue, kunia ke konet? Ukon. Up, aiwe la. Kanti familiar njan. Uku kanti, uh, ama, nawe, oh, mta kuetuwe. Well, not this one and that one, no, no, no. Um, thank you very much.
Siabo.
It, it was really nice to be here. Um, na nubala. We are grateful, siabo man.
Zivasinulund.
Let's do everything else in our power to try and prohibit failed fires. Uh, the chief has spoken about climate change. Honorable members will tell you that this is the eastern cape. Shh, shh. De hasban dia, ndianiti ndane, mariman kubegi, dizoham. Kakatindia ham, puma ndi monti wo, yale kapaa. Nintangazamzindilindile wela tra. So, after this process, from here we're going to the western cape. That's the only province that we are left with in terms of consultation on the national field and forest amendment, right? But we have already started the, the, the public consultations on the climate change bill. It belongs to us, uh, kosiya, it also belongs to us. So we've already started that process. So, um, because you people are beautiful, we might consider coming back here.
Siza pindesbuie, eh, i, u, uka kue kue mozulu. Siskalili kuti na yo leo meko, siza wyesne la.
Yeah.
Nyasnota.
Because we have, the, the chief has represented you. Um, we know that people of.
Sisneyatra, that's what chief has spoken.
Yeah, we know that people of whom would take climate change serious.
Uh, sia zo gokwa i mozulu, kuka wemezulu, krega si itate nyani, si bonele.
Your, your views on the climate change bill that we are discussing now as members of parliament are also important to us.
Uh, baluleke kakulu, i, i meko leni begileyo, kwe, kwe mozulu, kuka kua yo.
The beautiful lady there, her name is Chilis, is Chilis.
Uh, na uchilis ukona.
Yeah, Tyleka, her name is Tyleka.
Uh.
Uh, abelu.
Tyleka.
Uka itoli ke, umlungu lowa ngapa, agakwazu umbizalo. Agakwazu utichileka, utityleka. Yeah, agandivamieke. So, uchilis nangu. If you have written submissions you want to make on this bill. Tibana nochilis, agubama paper right. But also if you want to make inputs on the climate change bill, tibara nochilis.
Uh, please come close to Chilis, uh, for any inputs on the bill. Yes, she is.
And she's beautiful, say it.
She's beautiful.
Well, it doesn't look like you agree. Thank you very much, good talent, iteta, ndugongi laman kwa sekumbu inkoska kulu, thank you very much. Uh, ku, ku ta, ku talent, iteta, kotwa ba, 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 ayafunu vale voice man, but he, he writes, ne? Uh, she's just reminding me. Kuba, ba, 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 batrela nitala. And then, uh, our, our comrades, our, uh, um.
Podcast. Namipodcast amiga zawaze, eh? Stop singing, stop the calling.